We're at the com plan level, so overarching stuff. But I think, you know, when we identified, you know, just issues with working with our telecom franchisees on things like removing superfluous poles from the right of way. It's like an ongoing problem. Um, but it's, you know, to me, it may seem like a minor issue to a lot of folks, but it just, it's visual clutter throughout the city. Um, you know, Ms. Mester explained how, you know, they cut off the half of the old pole so that it's clear it's not for, you know, when Dominion replaces it. But then our cable franchisees typically are either, they're either tardy or they just are completely negligent in removing and moving their equipment to the new pole. And sometimes they do, but then somehow the old pole still lingers. There are certain corners in the city where you'll see sometimes three poles, two of which are completely superfluous. To me, that's an important issue. It's like, you know, in addition to having reliable service first and foremost, which I get is the point of the telecom section here, but that's something that I think we identified as a, as an issue. And I would recommend that we add that as something. And Ms. Mester indicated there are carrot stick ways to try to encourage those franchisees to, to do what they're technically required to do by the franchise agreement. And so we don't have to maybe get into the nitty gritty at the com plan level, but I think it'd be important to, to mention that, um, since it's, it's something that, you know, I think we all sort of live with it and it becomes something that you don't even, after a while, you accept it. But I don't think we need to accept it that we have to have old decrepit poles, um, cluttering up corners and intersections all throughout the city. And it overlaps to maybe other com plan objectives outside of, uh, infrastructure and utilities. Um, I think those were my main comments. Um, you know, the other, the earlier sections that, you know, kind of are inventorying, you know, the other public facilities I think are, are generally seem, seem good to me. Um, so, and I'm, and some of my colleagues may have additional comments on those, but for me, it was those last three sections. Um, but otherwise, yeah, like I said, good job and look forward to seeing it continue to progress.
Uh, thank you, and we'll take those into account. Um, one thing I want to flag is that the, uh, telecom, uh, franchise agreements are going, are being updated and going to city council. Um, I believe the date got changed somewhat recently, so I don't have it off the top of my head, but that's another good thing to keep an eye on for, um, specifically those issues like removing poles.
Okay, anything? I guess Mr. Krasner got us started down the road of, uh, opening it up to all the sections to provide input on, so I guess we can do that too. So does anybody else like to, uh, contribute some comments?
Can we go down the line?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, let's just go down the line. I have two questions. One's fairly basic and hopefully easy to answer. The other one, or maybe is a little more of an essay kind of question. Um, the outreach process that you outlined here looks, looks good in the, in the whole. Uh, I wonder in your choice of boards and commissions who are explicitly mentioned, if, um, there are other groups that are not mentioned that might be mentioned, such as the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. A number of the issues that we deal with anytime we do anything here relate to transportation, mobility, um, modernizing a suburb built around cars to be more inclusive of other means of motility. And I just wondered if the Transportation Committee might be included in your list of, uh, groups that, uh, are explicitly invited to participate?
Uh, at this point, we have not been including them on the list, but it, uh, you brought up some great points to take into consideration that, that transportation is, um, affects every part of the city. Uh, we, that is one thing we're looking for in this meeting is if there's any additional feedback on our community engagement plan, specifically, um, pop-ups or ways to engage with, um, the public. Um, any feedback on that would be great. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that. Yeah, I know you all have done a good job, I think, in the last couple of years, especially, uh, with outreach to the community through traditional means, meetings, uh, and non-traditional meetings such as pop-ups and visibility at, uh, events and occasions that might not normally have been places where issues such as this are discussed. So obviously let's keep moving in that direction and being as expansive as possible, you know, whether we, uh, can go into the community rooms of some of the multifamily buildings. Those offer an opportunity to gather lots of people together. Uh, that was not maybe the case when the document that we are starting with here from 20 years ago was the case. There were some multifamily buildings then, but not nearly as many as there are today. That'd be my only other suggestion. In terms of community outreach, the essay question I wanted to ask, if, uh, if you'll bear with me, uh, in communicating this, uh, effort to the citizenry, uh, which you've already started to do to some degree, but what I've, uh, observed and heard is, uh, a kind of fundamental question which goes like this. Uh, are we having to do all the things that are on the chopping list, basically, of this document because of growth? Or are we having to do these things because the city has reached a certain age where a lot of our original or maybe even one-time updated infrastructure simply needs to be attended to again? And some of these items are large, like the property yard, which if you listen to council's meeting last night on that topic, it's fairly shocking, the price tag of what a modern day property yard should cost. And yet we, I think it's safe to say, have spent very modestly in that area over certainly in the last 15, 20 years. So time has come for us to have to pay the piper. Uh, other, uh, facilities, uh, come to mind too is, um, projects that we built fairly modestly that maybe at the time could have been built a little more large, that now require, um, because of population growth to some degree, uh, more attention, more investment. At any rate, as we go forward here, I, I, I know there's some language, uh, in the document that speaks to this business of generational obligation to improve infrastructure that is not highly visible, underground mostly, as was mentioned earlier, things like stormwater and, and sewage disposal water. Uh, and there's also some language that speaks to, uh, growth, uh, leading us to need to do some of these things. Just at the outset here, is there any message that we can communicate to the public that helps them understand that while this is related to some of the projects that they may see being built, opened, approved, this is a, uh, a larger endeavor and a longer, uh, time horizon than any particular project that might be coming online in the next, say, five years or so, and rather is an attempt to look at the future of the city 25 years forward. We have to be humble about our ability to predict the future, uh, when you go out that far, but, uh, we are, we are trying to make an effort to see a false church that certainly has a much more, uh, substantial population than today's false church, probably something in excess of 20,000 rather than in excess barely of 15,000. Trying to get that message across at the outset is something that I would like to see the document do, or the presentations that you make around the introduction of the document emphasize when you're reaching out to the public. So that's a statement, I guess, more than a question, but it is a suggestion that I would offer. Thanks.
I think on that point, if I can jump in for a second, as the narrative evolves, and again, um, as Zoe mentioned, later this year, we're going to come back with a second version of this draft. We could look at opportunities to signal, uh, I, I think the nuance of what you just mentioned in that there's never going to be a conclusive assessment of what's generating and causing some of the improvements, but rather maybe the collective of all these issues where aging infrastructure, climate change, a lot of contributing factors to why utilities need to be upgraded. But as it relates to growth, uh, we can certainly use the opportunity to highlight not just the density that might be coming online or already has, but some of the maybe less visible improvements that density and growth bring to the table as they themselves, through the course of redevelopment, update very aging infrastructure on their particular sites, and in many cases actually improving things like stormwater management, uh, and other capacities that we currently may not have because sites are kind of legacy conditions that haven't been touched for decades. Uh, so that's a very complicated picture, but I think we can, you know, continue to see how we can evolve that narrative and paint as full of a picture as we can.
Thank you for summarizing my ramblings so succinctly, and, uh, that's a great mission statement, I think, for what lies ahead, so I appreciate it. Climate change is obviously an important factor too that I did not mention, and that needs to be brought to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Friedlander. You look like you're ready to go.
I figured we were going down the line.
Absolutely.
Unless you wanted to go.
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, um, I do want to actually echo, this is an incredible lift. Um, it's greatly expanded from the previous chapter that I've seen, and it really does go into detail. Some of it is really painful to read and almost embarrassing, um, you know, that, that some of our facilities have gone into such disrepair. Um, I mean, especially our, our, um, emergency operations center. Um, that is very concerning to me that that particular facility was temporary to begin with and isn't up to code, doesn't have generators, doesn't, I mean, this is what we're reliant upon in the event of an emergency. And if I can just go back a little bit and say, we've had the driest August on record, and it's not that far-fetched that there could be an urban fire. So that is concerning to me in that our emergency preparedness is kind of, you know, hobbling along. Um, and I want to, I like the fact that you guys put all of this information in here to give us the teeth that we need to pull something forward in the CIP and say, maybe we shouldn't wait until 2028 to invest in the design services for the yard and for all of those public services, the public service center that is, that is located there now. Maybe we need to pull the funds forward and get that consultant on board to really start evaluating our programming and how we need, what, what we need, what we need to co-locate, how much space is realistic, considering that recent renovations also aren't big enough to house what our current needs are. Um, I think all of that gives us the teeth to say, we really need to expedite this and bring it forward in our plan rather than wait until 2028 to start the design of it, um, which puts construction in, I think, 2029 CIP. I, I don't recall the dates, I, but to me, that seems a little far out when we are identifying that we are definitely in desperate need to upgrade our infrastructure. Um, I do appreciate the sanitary and the stormwater. Um, being a resident of Hillwood, I have seen that firsthand, and, um, because it is a co, those two systems do share the same, um, same, uh-
Right of way.
Right of way. And there is a lot of infiltration during heavy storms, so it's really great that, um, to see the work for the stormwater down on Hillwood and see in that last rain, how amazing that water just like, you, you couldn't even tell, we were having this huge storm until you walked around the corner and it was like six inches of water, you know, on the Fairfax County side on the streets and going, they did a great job, right? Like fixing that issue on, for stormwater on, on Hillwood. But the whole sanitary is definitely a problem. Um, so I really would like to, I, I appreciate that you've got both of those master plans identified in here, and I would like to echo, uh, Mr. Krasner's, um, sentiment on the sanitary side to identify the strategies specific to, specifically targeted to the problems that we already know, um, and then use that master plan to identify what do we need to prioritize next? Um, and that, that's going to help inform our CIP moving forward. Um, so I really do appreciate all the hard work that, that y'all have done. I think it, it really shows in this package. Um, and in addition, I, I have to say, I, I appreciated the, the grease trap, um, targeted measurements. I think that's definitely needed since we have a lot more, um, restaurants coming online. Uh, it reminded me of, um, a recent complaint that I heard this weekend about the Tinner Hill, you can smell sanitary. Um, so there might be something that, that the team needs to go and investigate down there now that that restaurant is looking like it's open, um, or there's somebody using that space. So I don't know if maybe there's a connection that just hasn't been opened, um, but it might be important to take a look at that. Um, and that was random, sorry, has nothing to do with the plan. Um, but on, in terms of other, other things in the plan, can I, can I bring this up?
Yeah, I think we kind of opened the doors, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was okay. Um, so, uh, so just to get more into like the, the nitty gritty, I was, in, in reading the plan, there's a couple of things that I thought, um, were kind of important to, to mention. So on, on page three, um, where you have, um, the vision, the new vision, I think it's important to include public utilities in that vision. So maybe, you know, where it says maintain and evolve its built facilities and then add public utilities, education system, yada, yada, yada. I think you do talk about it later in the, in the, the chapters, but I think it's important to put the, the public utilities in that first vision. Um, and then for guiding principles, um, in section 1.2, to add an actual line item that says conduct evaluation and analysis of existing capacity of public utilities to meet current and projected needs of the evolving community and growing population. And again, you've already kind of expanded upon that, but I think it's important to have that up in the, in the, um, guiding principles because it was, it, it almost looks like it's not represented up there. Um, and then another, um, item, and, and I think it's more semantics than anything, is, um, the hypothermia shelter and homeless shelter are used almost, they're, they're never used simultaneously, but I think we need to be consistent about what we're, how we're referencing that shelter, um, that services the unhoused, and especially because we're talking about extremes, um, that are kind of extreme temperature swings that are exacerbated by climate change. I think that's important to kind of bring into this conversation that it shouldn't, it, I don't think it's only going to be for cold, I think it's going to be for heat as well. And so we might need to put something in here so that we can expand that capacity, um, when we go to evaluate those services, um, because that is, that is a growing need, um, in the, in the hot summer months. Let's see, and then, uh, the last item I had was on, um, page 26 to add the recommendation that is shown on page 13, which is to hire a consultant, conduct a scoping and feasibility study for the functional needs inventory to identify and consolidate or co-locate, um, the support of efficient function, functional and co-compliant public services center. But overall, I think it's really, it's a fantastic lift. I think you guys are, are, um, definitely on the right track, so thank you. I appreciate all your, all your work on it.
Uh, thank you, and, um, we will, wrote as quickly as I could, but also go back in the video and make sure we got all of your comments.
Thanks.
Mr. Kowinski.
All right. Well, first of all, let me, uh, echo what everybody else has said, uh, on this desk, which is, this was obviously a very heavy lift and incredibly, um, well thought through. Uh, you know, being a new guy on the planning commission, it was incredibly informative to sort of understand, uh, everything you were talking about, and it was, it was, it's very well-written and, uh, very informative. So that's number one. Um, let me get into just a couple of suggestions. Um, they are minor suggestions, but I'd like to throw them out. Um, first, uh, on page 54, uh, of the, uh, we, um, just echoing what Mr. Kastner said about, um, I think we have to acknowledge that we need to be pretty forceful under, uh, 51A with the utilities, uh, to ensure that they fulfill their responsibilities so we can get those, uh, poles down. I think that's important, and I think we need to, we're having such a hard time getting that moving, I think we need to acknowledge it in the comprehensive plan and right here. Uh, the other thing that I think we have to acknowledge here in, under, uh, strategy five is, so the planning commission sent city council a, um, a letter advocating, uh, that, uh, the Virginia Assembly provide municipalities more authorities to require, uh, or incentivize communications companies to underground existing cable lines. So we do say in here, continue to work with developers to include undergrounding telecommunications lines as part of redevelopment projects, but I also think we need to acknowledge that we, our goal is to underground communications lines concurrent with the undergrounding of all utility, of all power lines. So under 51A, one, make sure we stomp our foot on the poles, taking those guys down, and two, making sure that we figure out a way to incentivize or, uh, get a little more push in terms of undergrounding existing cable lines. Uh, that's number one. Uh, number two, on page 13, um, I was a little bit surprised. It talked about leasing office space for city workers. Um, so we just went through a major renovation of City Hall in 2019, and I would have thought that that would have satisfied our requirements for at least 10 years. Did we get it wrong? Did, did, is City Hall not big enough?
Um-
I'm a little confused.
If possible, I might turn that over to, uh, Deputy Manager Andy Young.
Who's going to take the fall for this one?
Well, I don't, I'm, I'm not, it's, I'm not accusing anybody, I'm just, I was a little confused because I, I just thought we added a lot of space.
Before Andy even has to start, I'll say, it's my fault.
So, um, so I wasn't around for kind of all the difficult decisions that were had to be made with the-
Well, there you go, I wasn't either.
With, with City Hall. I, I would say that where we're at today, um, you know, we're kind of stretched with the space that we have, you know? We've got, you know, we had a couple interns in over the summer, and it's like, there's no place for them to sit. Like, we had one sitting in the conference room for the, for the week, and, um, and so we've been creative about trying to kind of share spaces and kind of work through those kinds of things. But I think where Ms. Friedlander was talking earlier about, part of how we've made it work is we're, we're leveraging temporary spaces within the city for some of our functions that were, I think, only intended to be temporary, but for all intents and purposes at the moment, permanent. So the, the, the trailers out at the property yard that we're using for the fire marshal and the emergency operator, um, emergency management folks, we've got, um, a number of employees in the Gage House out, out here, it's a historic farmhouse that we're using for offices for, um, for our real estate assessment office, as well as a, a number of our employees in Public Works that do capital projects. And again, we're making it work, but, um, but when you look at what the potential timeline is to make a big investment to, um, redo the property yard or, or some other thing, you know, through the plan that, that we've talked through this even, like, can be eight or 10 years away. And so I think what we're advocating is, um, these temporary spaces that we weren't even supposed to be in this long, talking about continuing to have folks in those for another eight to 10 years and not having any flexibility, that's where we've come out and said, you know, we think, um, leasing some office space to kind of get folks out of those spaces and give us some breathing room makes sense. I think, you know, uh, council is very direct with us, I think, kind of in, in, in the discussions we've had with them on, um, needing to kind of lay out the data and be able to make a case to do something like that, and, and that, that's what we intend to work on.
Okay. No, that answers the question. I mean, if there's a need, there's a need. I was just, you know, we, we all, most of us who've lived in the city long enough had suffered through City Hall being closed down for a while and, you know, and we just thought at the back end, it was going to be, uh, something that was going to keep us going for a while. But if there's a need, there's a need, I guess, so appreciate it. Um, the, one more, a couple more. Uh, one, under action, uh, 2.3A, there's a, uh, proposal for a study of new facilities. Uh, 2.3A, uh, I think it's on page 18 of the, uh, plan. Um, it, yeah, it says, conduct a recreational, uh, facilities assessment to explore possible additional, uh, recreational facilities in the city, which could include, you know, dedicated recreation center and a couple of other things. But one of the things it brings up is an aquatics facility. Um, I, from, from my perspective, there is potentially a big need for an aquatics facility, but there's also obviously a big investment and a big footprint of public land. Uh, and, um, a little, i- is that something that we as a city are seriously considering, or was that just sort of thrown in to say, let's just take a look?
Uh, I think it's, it's, um, a little bit, something in between those two, where I think, which is, um, a bit of a political answer, but I think that the, the reason that it's here and not in priority needs is because we are identifying a bit, it a bit more as a want, a want to produce more, uh, or to have more recreational space, possibly aquatic space. Um, I think that, uh, coming out of the recommendations from the TAP and other, uh, ongoing processes and, and learning a little bit about the history of, of, um, the discussions around building a pool in the city, I think that there's a chance to look creatively at, um, seeing if there's a possibility to do, have a public, private partnership that develops a pool and, and kind of shares some of that cost as it is a, an extremely costly, um, or it can be an extremely costly endeavor. Uh, yeah, so I think, um, well, it's not something that, you know, we are putting on the work plan for even the next, any amount of time, really. Um, the advantage of having it in this comprehensive plan is that we can, uh, as it's, I said in my presentation, um, share it with private developers as, as kind of, look, this is some, this is something the community has identified doesn't want, or we can look at it when we're doing other investments, um, like developments out in, uh, the Gordon Road Triangle or different things. Having this kind of noted in here, uh, gives space for it to be referenced back to. Um, so I hope that someone answered the question.
No, that's, that, that's very good. And I don't know if, it, obviously of all the things in here, it's mentioned only once sort of in a list of other things, but it would be a, a, a major infrastructure investment, a major footprint, a major change to the city in terms of our recreational facilities. Um, I'm wondering if, I mean, maybe it's not mature enough to call out separately or something like that, but, um, it's a fairly major, would be a major change to the city overall, so. Um, and then the last, the only last thing that I said, uh, wanted to mention is, um, on the vision statement, uh, when I was reading it the first time, I started reading the old one, and I realized that's the old one. I would recommend, it's, it's nice to have, uh, while we're reviewing the document, but after the document is, goes final, I would probably either take that old vision statement out or throw it into an annex, uh, just because it's, it caused- old vision statement out or throw it into an annex, just because it causes people to say, "Well, what changed?", and stuff like that. Our vision should be our vision, and it shouldn't necessarily be backward looking at what our old vision was, so. But otherwise, again, kudos to the great work on this chapter. I think it's been great, good read.
Thank you, and I agree about the vision statement, I think it's, moving it to an appendix is a good idea for the final adopted version.
Okay, all set? Very good. All right, I've got a few comments and a couple of questions, I'll try to keep these brief, I'll probably hopscotch around a little bit. On, first of all, on the stormwater, the utilities, I think there was reference in there on the need to redo the credit program for individuals to get a reduction to their stormwater fee, which is, which is good. I was on the original stormwater credit task force, and I think it was well over a decade ago that we did that, and I'm not sure that there've been any updates since then, and I'm not even sure if anybody's even using it today, maybe, maybe I'm just kind of not aware of it, but in any event, I would be happy if that could be emphasized a little bit, and I don't know if there's a way to put a little bit more structure around that as far as, you know, we, we plan and 2Q, you know, next year to start this, or just something that kind of gives it a little bit more tangibility than, somewhere out there we plan to redo the stormwater credit fee. I guess my interest is that I think it's one way that we can try to encourage people to implement green infrastructure. So, anyway, there's that. Also, on the master plan, I was glad to see that there's a need to move ahead with that. And I think that's important in terms of the Planning Commission, because a lot of times we will get a, an application that meets the stormwater requirements on site, but it's recognized that, you know, downstream, it's gonna run into a problem. So, you know, I think maybe a master plan might be a helpful way to begin to identify where are the key areas and that, you know, you can start to kind of structure it for purposes of, you know, the CIP and how to channel money to those places to do that, I like the fact that you're now referencing the Government Operations Energy Action Plan, but you do it in terms of a link to learn about it, and I would feel happier if we could incorporate it in a couple of places to say that we plan to implement it, you know, that it's actually part of this plan to be implemented, not just something that's off on the side to learn about. I may be kind of exaggerating a bit, and apologize for that, but I was very happy to see that it's, the references in there, and you can't do it too much, you know, from my perspective. I liked the reference to the need to do energy audits for the city facilities, I think we would learn a lot through that process, and I think it would also help the implementation of the Energy Action Plan as well. Question, are school buses, are they considered part of this chapter?
So, I, the buses themselves are not, but we do discuss the parking in the property yard section.
Right.
Yes, that's...
Okay, well, I was just wondering if this was the place where maybe some type of a schedule on purchasing electric buses could, could begin, you know, I'm sure that's gotta be somewhere, but, and I wasn't sure if it was in this, in this chapter or not. If it's not, you might want to reference that somewhere to say, you know, planning for electric school buses takes place in whatever.
I think, I think that might be more in the short term, but we'll look into it and include.
Sure.
As a reference.
There was a reference to a metal roof replacement on the fire station, and that was kind of perplexing, because I thought metal roofs last 50 years, and I know that was put in in 2001, so somebody might want to check to see if there was a warranty when that was first put in, to see if it, you know, if we get some credit there. And I think that's pretty much it, I'm glad we have another look at this, and I guess it'll be January or sometime around then, because it's, it's made a lot of progress so far, and it is uplifting to see that progress as we go along, so I'm glad we have one more opportunity to do that. And so, thanks to you and thanks to, to all of the staff. Actually, I should open it up one more time to see if anybody else has thought of anything else that they might want to say. Any, any comments from you, Ms. Lariva? Any final comments from you, or?
Nothing, well, too specific, just want to thank everyone for their thoughtful notes and questions, it's very helpful as we continue to move this plan down the road, to have this input as we go, and again, want to extend the thank you to all the internal staff members who have worked with us, especially DPW members. I heard a, you had a question a bit about the stormwater fee, I don't know if that's something that...
The credit?
If DPW wants to address in any way, if not, I'll let it go, I just wanted to give the option.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, thank you for the opportunity. So the program, the stormwater credit program is still available for city residents, but it is based on the stormwater facilities you build on the lots, whether it is a voluntary basis or it is based on the development, but the program is still there. So even though you don't have a stormwater management facility on your lot, simply you are qualified by putting, by planting your trees and pledging not to use fertilizer. So, there is a simple process, stormwater prevention plan, so if you fill that, simply a minimum, you will get 10% credit.
That's what I did, exactly what I did, yep.
Yeah, and if you have a stormwater management facility, like planter box, infiltration trench, permeable pavement, you will get more credit.
Right.
At the same time, you will get a contract with us maintaining the stormwater facility in order to qualify for the fee every year. But the program is still there, there is a lot of resources on our website, probably it's just a matter of like outreach program to educate residents, we have this program, but the program is still available, and there is a lot of resources on our website, stormwater website, you can apply, it's a very simple process. Once you send out the application, we will review it and we engage with our GIS manager to update the calculation, but the program is still available for all city residents, whether it's commercial or private, still available.
It sounds like an opportunity for the Public Utilities Commission to help with outreach on that.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, I think that concludes our input to this, not seeing any other indications, so I think we can move on to the, to the next item, if everybody's comfortable with that. Thank you again, Mr. Kirk, for joining us. So I guess the next item is our favorite topic here of recent here, the Site Plan Code Amendments. Mr. Matuzik, would you like to introduce this?
Happy to do that, I'm just gonna bring up the presentation. Some of you have seen this just a few nights ago, so apologies, we've not made any changes for consistency purposes, but I think it's healthy to kind of revisit some of it as, there's a lot of information to unpack here. And as we get started, I think there's a pretty broad acknowledgement on our side from staff about kind of the delicate changes that come with this as it relates to this body, we're very mindful of that, and I think as we spent a lot of time this summer considering how to address state code changes, we spent a lot of time carefully and thoughtfully looking at what is the best course of action, given I think the level of respect we have for the feedback you all provide on a lot of items that we have to produce and bring to the council. So with that in mind, I wanted to kind of share that context for a lot of the work that's reflected in this presentation. So, with that, I'm gonna cover the first third of the presentation and then hand it over to Henry and Jack to kind of walk you through where we've landed on this. So, the presentation generally wants to cover the process prior to July of this year, so historically, how have site plans and subdivisions been treated, because a lot of that really informs what the actual impact is of the state code changes, both internally, and the way staff engages on that with the council and Planning Commission, but also externally for applicants that will experience the changes slightly differently. And then we're gonna get into the actual proposed approach that we've developed, and procedurally, what does that mean for the review process, but then also from a city code perspective, the changes that are necessary to implement that approach. So, with that, we'll go into the next slide and really highlighting the major site plan typologies. There's more than what's on the screen, but I think these were some of the broader categories that we're highlighting to capture just the broad spectrum of applications that planning staff generally has to review throughout the course of a year. So these could span from your smaller commercial uses, sometimes introducing new structures, or sometimes just renovating existing ones. We have townhomes now that are being submitted as well, the follow-up to our special exception processes with the mixed use and multifamily site plan applications, the bigger scale projects. And then finally, the ordinance, you know, does talk about several other elements that, when they're proposed, require a site plan process to be approved. So between those four, there's a lot of variation in what we receive and what we have to review. On the next slide, we take a step back and just look at across all those different applications that do have to come in, who is involved in that review, and what topics do they have to consider as they review the applications. And this slide is really important, because regardless of what the state code changes are with respect to approval authority or the length of review, this slide is not gonna change. So these stakeholder groups and these topics still have to be addressed and covered carefully with each application, regardless of how much time we have to do that. So as you'll see here in our approach, we are making sure that the adequate opportunities continue to exist for these stakeholders to be involved and for those topics to be covered, because we simply have to. On the next slide, we can see that, now that we know who's involved and what they have to review, the typical process really would start with the application and the intake, making sure we have a complete application, the fees are paid, and once that begins to get routed to a number of staff that have different specialties and subject matter experts, and boards and commissions, we kind of go through the cycle of generally three rounds of review, sometimes earlier in the process, but usually with the first or second round, the Planning Commission receives kind of a work session, an introduction to what's being proposed. At that point, we're getting to a level where at least one round of review occurred, so staff has some preliminary thoughts of where we have consistencies and where some challenges may exist and application might have to be changed to address them. But generally, if we look back at the various application types, kind of what we've reviewed in the last couple of years, on average, it does take at least three rounds of review to address everything. And they're not all the same, the first round usually is the more comprehensive one, it might take longer, we're developing the full set of comments, and usually, especially with a better applicant team, as that progresses, each round has less and less comments to address. But none of them are perfect, and there's a lot of, you know, unique circumstances and challenges that continue to be addressed with each round. But usually by the third round, we have a pretty good sense if the application is ready. And at that point, certain elements begin to get triggered, we start notifying adjacent properties, and we can start to look at potential dates for a public hearing, and Planning Commission can approve that development application. So with the next slide, you can see that from start to finish, that intake and fee collection to Planning Commission approval, if you consider the average three rounds of review, we're generally looking at a three-month window, 90 days, up to. Some projects, given their simplicity or ability to respond to comments, have come in quite ahead of schedule, some have taken three times as long. So the spectrum is pretty broad. But as you see on the next slide, what the state is actually highlighting deals with what we have been in practice using for our final round. So 45 days is what the current code requires as a maximum for the review. We have not started that clock until we felt that enough comments have been addressed and we can start to look at public hearing dates. We did not start that clock the minute we get the application and fees have been collected. That would be a very different story. So staff has been working behind the scenes, working with other stakeholder groups, and making sure this application progresses and improves, and only until that third round did we officially start the 45-day window of what we kind of consider a final application, essentially ready for a public hearing. And this is important, because in many assessments of what the state code changes were, the comparison becomes, well, 40 days is not that far from 45 days. The unique difference here is that when the state code changes came out, it is also referring to a complete start and finish. So that 40-day window would begin the minute fees have been collected from the applicant, and therefore, we are essentially squeezing all three rounds into a 40-day window, based on the interpretation of that language. So in the next slide, you can see that there's two specific, you know, bills that are being addressed. The first one deals with the approval authority, you've heard several briefings on this already, but that shifts from this group to the designated agent. Earlier this summer, we've identified that that would be the planning director, and as a note, we're gonna keep reminding everyone that subdivisions, because that approval authority lives in the charter, are not impacted by this particular bill. On the next slide, you can see that the other bill deals with that timing issue, and kind of constraining applications, particularly those that have a single use, so solely residential or solely commercial, to the 40-day window, and importantly, the 40 days only applies to the first round. So the minute we receive something, our ability to provide complete comments is restricted to only 40 days. Subsequent applications, if comments need to be addressed, actually get reduced to 30 days, and then third and any final additional rounds are only allowed to last for 14. So as you'll see on this slide, if we do one more click, those same three rounds, if you just do the math, actually come up very close to what we've already been using as 90 days. So 40 days for round one, 30 for round two, and 14 for round three is essentially what we've been doing. The difference here, and this is where we shift to what the applicant might experience, is that rather than engaging with staff with the back and forth about comments and resubmissions, for us to be able to do that now in that same window of time, a formal rejection of the plan has to happen with every submission. So we received that first round, provide comments, we have no choice but to reject the plan, further comments come in, and we kind of do this until everything's addressed. But in reality, the kind of start to finish, we still think is gonna take about three months on average, based on the type of applications that we see. And I think with that, I'm gonna hand things over to Henry to kind of start alluding to our approach, particularly as it relates to the procedural changes.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, Mr. West Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Henry Zhang from the planning team. In order to, I mean, in addition to the code changes, we had to change our procedure in a way, tried to promote specifically three things, one is the pre-application, pre-application, pre-application review, in order to let the applicant, you know, know those changes, and at the same time, we tried to get the review started earlier. For example, we need to do this conceptual review before they spend too much money in the procedure. And then the third one is to have this information readily available online. Next slide, please. We have, for example, we have this flow chart, and, excuse me, we have this checklist of the site plan, but we already have some graphically designed, you know, like flow chart, those to be, need to be online, and then we had to identify in those, you know, applicable policies, regulations, standards will be posted online. Next slide, please. Within this new review process, I think the Planning Commission's... Within this new review process, I think the Planning Commission's roles will be changed significantly, even though we try our best at this time. The state code doesn't, you know, say advisory role of the Planning Commission. So we try to keep the Planning Commission's role advisory. So that means we would still refer site plan to the Planning Commission, given the very limited time periods. And then we, you know, hopefully, we can schedule at least one meeting, but that meeting will be a little bit different from the current one. We may not have a, you know, a standard staff report to present. Instead, maybe the, you know, developer team will present the case and then we'll have some interim comments from us, for example, like DRC review letter, that can be a staff report, you know, still present enough information and for the Planning Commission to make recommendation. Next slide, please. Yes, I think we try to also, because of the Planning Commission's review, it's a very important venue in the city's tradition, you know, for the public participation. And then we're trying to still keep that. And the comments from the Planning Commission will be advisory to the designated agent. I think the staff will help, you know, Planning Commission to do a very quick turnaround for the comments or recommendation. And then that will be sent it to the designated agent. I think under the advice of the city attorney, those comments will not, you know, influence the designated agent. That's the caveat from the legal counsel. Next slide, please. We put together a flow chart of this 40-days review. You see here, it's very condensed. All the board and commission will be in an advisory role. We have those like notice previously. We still need to, we still try to keep it, but the timing and the contents will be changed slightly. For example, like the sign posted on the side, it's both of them, and the APON notice, both of them are not legally required at this time in the new process, but we still plan to keep them. For example, the completeness review will be shortened. I mean, you know, usually probably in one day or two after everything is reviewed, and then we may need to post the site right away. And then the APON notice right now, we're thinking about 10 days before the final 40-days review, but on the condition that we had to receive this revised, you know, submission within the certain time periods. Those are the preliminary thought. But as we keep going, we try to include other best practice. For example, we're going to launch, we're planning to launch a site plan menu concurrently as soon as the changes to the code adopted. And then in that way, we'll spell out the specific steps for each, I mean, applicant to follow and then to also identifying the responsibility of each party. For example, step one, who is the responsibility? What's the applicant need to do? What's staff need to do? So it's very, very specific and that's pretty much in the progress. Yeah, I think that's all I have to cover. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Henry. Yeah, there's various sections of the code, obviously, that are affected in order to keep up with the changes at the state level. So these next couple of slides are going to cover some of the key changes happening in the code and call out some of the specific code sections of note. So the first key change we want to highlight is, you know, the big change that we've been talking about, shifting that site plan approval authority from the Planning Commission to the designated agent. And so some of the key sections affiliated with this change includes the definitions section in the zoning ordinance, section 48-2, where the designated agent definition has been included, lifted directly from the state code or from the state. The Planning Commission's advisory role as proposed in the new site plan review process as Henry was just covering has been updated, included in section 48, 11, 36. And then all the other site plan related reviews, including, you know, the how site plans are reviewed generally, the special exception, site plan process, and review deadlines, those have all been updated. Regarding the special exception site plan, and we talked a little bit about this at the council meeting on Monday night, city council would obviously still be responsible for reviewing and approving the special exception regulations. And then that site plan piece would essentially be divorced from that consideration process and would go into the site plan review process generally, but of course, would still reflect any special exception-specific regulations, but it would just follow the review and approval process as a typical site plan. And the, did I skip to a? The next key change is in the fee structure. That's in section 15-28. And so in reviewing our fees, the fee structure in the city, we honed in on the site plan specific ones. So any other, the only fees adjusted in this structure relate to site plan resubmissions, recognizing that the city's fee structure is pretty out of date, considering those of our neighbors. Included in the scope of these changes is a specific update for resubmissions. And then finally, I want to highlight the, some weighing criteria for the designated agent. So the Planning Commission, of course, reviews requests for waivers and modifications to required off-street parking and landscaping and site plan application requirements. And so those considerations would now go to the designated agent for consideration. So staffs updated those relevant sections for the designated agent. And the most significant updates are in the landscaping chapter, where some additional and specific criteria has been added for the designated agent to use when considering requests for waivers or modifications to landscaping-related requirements. And the off-street parking requirements and site plan approval, or the, excuse me, the site plan application sections already had some specific criteria that the Planning Commission used when making their decisions. And so that, those criteria were largely carried on and weren't updated much, but there were some clarifications and additional smaller edits made to those sections. And lastly, I'm going to cover the public meeting schedule for these draft code updates. So city council held their work session on the same code amendments as being proposed before you tonight. That was on Monday night. Following tonight's work session, the city council has a scheduled first reading for October 27th, followed by the Planning Commission's public hearing on November 19th. And right now, we have city council's final action or second reading scheduled for December 8th. So that'll turn it back to Mr. Matusek to wrap us up. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for that. And again, we are trying to solicit some feedback, reactions. And as, you know, Jack mentioned, we have a schedule that takes us to early December when some of this would be completed with the second reading from city council. So looking forward to feedback.
Anybody want to jump in?
Sure. Thanks for the presentation. And I heard it the second time, it made even more sense. So just a couple of comments. On Monday, I mentioned, Matt, that I would try, I was trying to understand comparatively how our involvement of a planning commission differs from Arlington or Fairfax, which in fact already gives the authority to the planning staff to approve site plans largely, as my understanding. And your comment was, those are much bigger jurisdictions. A planning commission wouldn't be able to handle that level of workload of the hundreds of site plans that have to be reviewed every year in these larger jurisdictions. So I think, first of all, my comment is, I'd like to echo what Mayor Hardy said, that we should give this a shot and see how well it works and then we can adjust if it's not working. I don't think we have any choice, but I think we should go into this with an open mind and give this a shot. In Arlington, and you have a lot of experience, I guess from a, we pride ourselves of being a little city where somebody can call the planning director directly, you know, and send him an email and says, I'm really concerned with this project. We could do that here in Falls Church. That wouldn't be the case in Arlington. Is it your assessment that the site plans are substantively worse, not as refi, not as good? Is there, is there something happening in Arlington where because there's no citizen involvement and because there's no planning commission involvement, that the site plans are not qualitatively as good as the ones here in Falls Church?
That's a loaded question.
I don't want to.
Well, let me go backwards. So the first point you made, I think, is very important. We do consider this kind of a trial period, whether you speak with other jurisdictions, officials that deal with APA, there's certainly a lot of reactions and a lot of movement to consider if further changes are needed, changes that may be, you know, applicable and implementable by next summer. We're going to be waiting and seeing to see what, if anything comes of that. We may be right back here next fall, changing this language even further. We may be back here, even if the language remains the same, but maybe with some lessons learned after maybe a few applications have gone through. So this isn't, I think, the final time we're going to be discussing this item. I do think it offers a healthy assessment of areas where I think we could be more efficient, where we could be ensuring staff and myself are accessible to the community, information that they may need to file that first application is more readily available, encouraging to have conceptual meetings with us before they file, give them the best chance possible to get through the process, and elevating, you know, flow charts and other graphics that spell out what is the current process, just so they kind of know what to expect and have a little bit more transparency on that, which is particularly true for applicants that don't frequently or repeatedly go through the process compared to maybe, you know, land use attorneys that have been here on a monthly basis and know exactly how things work. So that's the first thing, right? This is going to keep evolving. You don't know exactly where, but we are using it as an opportunity to become more efficient. As it relates to other jurisdictions, the information we have researched does demonstrate that it's actually a pretty mixed bag, depending on where you look. There are some jurisdictions that rely on the zoning administrator for certain approvals, some that rely on the planning director or a designee of the city or county manager. And then you have other ones that have a planning commission that serves in that role. As we zoom further and to your last point, the comparisons to Arlington, the reason that those become difficult is that Arlington, in acknowledging its size and quantity of applications, has made a very smart choice that before applications reach the Planning Commission or the County Board, they actually have established smaller committees that look at specific long-range initiatives, site plan activities with applications, and even zoning ordinance amendments. And those committees really are the body and opportunity for public feedback. They provide that initial feedback, inform staff and the applicants of what the reactions might be, and there's a gradual buildup before those applications and initiatives end up with the larger body like Planning Commission or County Board in that case, where approvals may take place. So they have a specific system in place that allows multiple opportunities for feedback. All of those are public meetings. Here, we're primarily relying on you all, and in some cases, depending on the action, city council for those opportunities. We don't have those smaller committees to work through, although we do have the Architectural Board, Urban Forestry. So we have some, but it's very difficult to compare those two.
I see. That's a great explanation. So let me just try and do a little forensics on how the process might change. So just as an example of one that we just sat through, the Akonise building. So when the Akonise site plan came to us, one of the, the applicant said, because of the nature of the business, we don't need as much parking, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we approved, we as a commission approved them to have less parking than is required in the legislation or in the code. But that was a somewhat subjective decision by the commission. We weighed the facts of the nature of the business and the parking requirements, and we said, okay, that makes sense. There was nothing in the code that says this is the equation you use. If that comes to you, would you have the authority to say, I don't want as much parking? I'm going to authorize you not to have as much parking as says, as it says in the code because of the nature of the business? I've heard your argument and I agree with you and I'm going to permit you to have less parking. Would you be able to do that?
The current approach means I would. However, it wouldn't be simply a matter of the representative or owner verbally acknowledging that they're making a request. I think as you read through the specific code changes that we have proposed at the end of the report, there are specific parking studies and more thorough justification for why in that particular instance, with that use, with that site, a reduction is actually appropriate. Are there TDM measures that may be able to offset some of the impacts of that request? Taking the exact use, the exact site, access to that site, circulation, a lot of different factors would inform that decision. Beyond the endpoint, which I think you're targeting, leading up to that, if you look at the updated flow chart, as that application is filed, it not only will be distributed to staff that typically look at it, but in our approach, it would also be routed to you all as well as other groups for feedback. And at that time, either staff, but certainly the applicant, will be able to confirm that as we're all beginning to interview or begin to review that application, there's some known elements like waivers and modifications that are up for discussion. So I would imagine when that application reaches you for that singular meeting, the applicant would have an opportunity to demonstrate what the parking analysis calls for, what study they've submitted. And we would actually have an opportunity to say if there's enough information to make that judgment or we need more. A lot of times, I think there's a mismatch of what we consider as sufficient information to justify the request and what the applicant thinks is a compelling argument. And quite often, that's, that gap of expectations is what necessitates additional rounds of review. So I would fully expect that with maybe less seasoned applicants that are just coming for their first ever application, we may have that lack of understanding unless they've come to us early in that conceptual round and had an opportunity to really understand the bar that they need to meet in order to qualify. But I will say that at some point, there is a level of subjectivity involved because parking and landscaping are never going to have a formula that, you know, from a fully transparent perspective spells everything out on every site. Those things just don't exist. And I think codifying them is only going to open us up to further amendments because we're not going to get it right. I don't think anybody has. So we're trying to find the middle ground of introducing some criteria that allows everybody to see what kind of finding would the designated agent have to make in justifying the approval of parking relief or landscaping relief.
Got it. That's a great explanation. And just one last question. You have on your flow chart, it says applicant. You have on your flow chart, it says "application complete" and then "post signs at site." So, I guess at some point in time, you're going to say, "This site is being rebuilt" or something like that, and a neighbor can walk by, see that sign, go onto the link. I assume there'll be a link where he can see the application and see everything that's being done with that application. And at that point, he can communicate that either to you, or if he wanted to, in advance of the Planning Commission or the Architecture Advisory Board or something like that. Is that correct? Is that the way that works?
That's correct. And those particular notices can be distributed fairly soon, once we receive the application and that process is beginning. The other notices that maybe are surrounding the property and targeting the adjacent owners, those happen towards the end of the review, when we feel like we have something that is close to approval.
I see. Okay, good, thank you. That's all.
I'm going to just jump in real quick with a couple of questions. Henry talked about the single and abbreviated review session that you're thinking about in terms of the new process for the Planning Commission. Would you be, Matt, would you be at that meeting?
It's something we're still considering.
Okay. Because it struck me that, you know, since you're supposed to be separate and apart from, and not be influenced by us.
An argument could be made that I'm not needed there.
Yeah, okay. And then I was trying to sort out, in terms of our putting together some type of a recommendation to you, let's see, after we have this meeting. Since the timeframe is so short, when would we do that? Would there be like another meeting, you know, or would we just have to try to do it in that same meeting, come up with a document and forward it? Same answer perhaps? You're still going through it?
No, I can take a stab at that. Part of that goes back to the broader goals of being more efficient, which I think everybody has a role to play in that. In your example, if we have a meeting like tonight, comments are shared. The beauty of a transcript and recording allows us to maybe a day or two later come back and summarize that. So, I would imagine if these meetings happen on a Wednesday, I don't see why we'd be unrealistic that maybe by the end of that week, with Jack's help and maybe the lead planner who's involved, we could kind of transcribe maybe the more permanent comments that came out of that meeting and share those with the applicant.
I think we'd also probably have a motion prepared. I mean, just like a normal sort of Planning Commission recommendation to council. We'd probably have a motion prepared where the Planning Commission could edit it with any specific comments that could be included on the record as, you know, its formal recommendation to the designated agent.
So, that'd be kind of like a recommendation, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else want to jump in?
Yeah, I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think, also to step back, I think that, you know, for my fellow commissioners, I mean, I think we should, you know, not immediately jump to the conclusion that the sky is falling. I mean, it's an unfortunate change. I think it shows a bit of, you know, lack of understanding about how small jurisdictions work at the state level. But with that said, you know, even when we, you know, even before this change, whenever we review a site plan, we're always acting in administrative capacity, meaning that our actual real ability, you know, to, you know, approve or disapprove a site plan was always quite limited. Site plans by their nature, by their definition and state code, are like an administrative, you check off all the boxes, you get approved. And so, while we did have a little bit of discretion in waivers, you know, that was about it. Now, certainly, there's a benefit to the sort of the intangible factor of being able to, you know, influence an applicant or a site plan applicant by our preference or expressing a preference about design and colors and layout. And certainly, you know, we can, you know, and we were effective at doing that. But when push ever came to shove, I mean, our ability to actually, you know, so we shouldn't like sort of feel that we've lost a huge power that we previously had. I mean, we really didn't. The administrative approval now is being shifted to staff, which, as was referenced, has been the way it's been done in, I'll speak to Fairfax County, our other neighbor, it's been done that way in Fairfax County for many, many decades. And in Fairfax County, it's the equivalent of Director of Public Works, it's the Land Development Services Director, who is the final, has the final sign-off on site plans. And, you know, again, for various reasons. So, again, I think it's important to remember that it's an administrative thing. I also think, you know, one thing too, we should also, that is fair game, because if there's concern about the amount of discretion that is being delegated or being authorized to staff level, what can be waived at the site plan level? That can be changed by ordinance. There's no, if we, and I say "we" collectively as a city, felt that parking reduction should not be something that can be waived as a site plan requirement, the ordinance could say, "You can't do that, that you have to give the Planning Commission or the city council or..." I mean, just as this is not, I'm not necessarily recommending this approach, but Fairfax has like a two-tiered system. If you're below a certain percentage of reduction, it can be done as part of a site plan administratively. If it's above a certain reduction, you have to actually, or a larger percentage, you have to request that and get approval from, in Fairfax's case, it's the governing body, it's the Board of Supervisors approves it. But, so in that sense, there's, you know, as far as like, you know, speaking to, learning as we go and, you know, looking at how this process works, you know, that's something to keep in mind as a commission. If we felt that we wanted to recommend an ordinance change to, you know, have some ability to, you know, not give staff as much discretion on waivers, we could do that. I mean, I say "we" meaning again, if the city council approving an ordinance amendment. Things like the landscape stuff, I think that typically makes a lot of sense to give staff some discretion on those types of modifications or waivers. But if there are things that we feel in the site plan, you know, ordinance or the site plan requirements that maybe, you know, we're not as comfortable with, we could talk about that. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. I do appreciate that staff laid out, you know, criteria, because I think that's obviously very important, not just for our benefit, but for the city, of course, to be very transparent about what the criteria for a waiver will be. Otherwise, you open yourself up to allegations of being arbitrary, being, you know, and not being consistent. So, I think it is important and, you know, and I think in general, some of the, you know, the language and the criteria that have been laid out for the waivers is kind of in the ballpark of what we'd want to see. Really, you know, easy to identify, objective criteria. But in that sense, yeah. And so, right, the fact that we, I think that our ability to still provide at least an advisory recommendation, I think, is good. And in actuality, we're not, you know, with that ability, still having an open session, the ability to have a meeting, hear from the public if they want to come to a Planning Commission hearing, when we're, you know, coming up with a motion for comments on the site plan. I think it's probably the best we can hope for with the current legislation. And hopefully, as was mentioned, there'll be, you know, additional, you know, changes. I know there are, it's not just Falls Church, there are a number of other small jurisdictions around the state that were affected by this. And so, yeah, Virginia APA and others are looking at, you know, ways to try to make changes. You know, no one knows exactly what will happen next, in the 2026 session, as far as that goes, but I suspect there will be changes because it was such an overarching, you know, piece of legislation with a lot of unintended consequences. So, it's kind of more my sort of opinion on the matter. I mean, you know, getting down to the nitty-gritty, like I said, I think overall, the staff's done a good job to try to come up with a process for something they've never had to do before. And I'm glad they're still providing for some public input, I think that's important. But, yeah, it just makes the ordinance, you know, all the more important to get right so that, you know, it's very clear what the process is. And, yeah. And of course, we will have to learn as we go. I mean, it's inevitable that there'll be things we want to adjust after we see a few of these come through. And not to throw Ekonize under the bus, but I'm sure everyone saw there was a large "for sale" sign in front of that property, you know, after we approved that. So, I don't know if that was sold or who owns that now, or if Ekonize is even going to go in there. There's no requirement that Ekonize ever even go in there. So, we should be careful about, just as an aside, about granting a waiver because of someone's particular business characteristics, because, you know, they can sell the property. And I don't know if they did, but, you know, there was nothing that would require Ekonize to be there. Any new user would have to meet the same type of, and they meet the reduction, but in any event. So, that's kind of, I mean, I don't really have any questions at this point. I mean, I think staff's, you know, doing a good job at putting this together. I kind of, yeah, agree with what was just referenced with council, you know, we should give it a try because we kind of don't have a choice. And see how things go. And as long as we still have an ability to provide at least an advisory recommendation, that was all I was concerned about, because I do think we provide, you know, some benefit. I mean, just, you know, the various backgrounds that we have and the people on the commission have. And while we can't officially, you know, direct the designated agent what to do, I mean, I'm confident that staff will take the Planning Commission recommendation under serious advisement, and, you know, will still be able to have some influence even in this limited capacity that, you know, was again, something done, you know, out of our control, so.
Would the public hearing also take place in that one review meeting for the Planning Commission as well? Okay. That'll be interesting, see how that works. Yeah. Sure.
Thank you. Now, I, everybody's comments so far have been very thorough. I do appreciate the plan that you guys have set forward. My biggest concern was being able to have that review and hear public comments, because I do actually listen to those and appreciate those, and take that into account when I'm thinking about a project or an applicant. So, I think it is kind of a wait and see, let's just take it as it comes, and we'll have to tweak it if we can later, but I'm on board with giving it a shot. So, thank you.
Please.
I'll finish. Most of you were in the council meeting that I was able to extensively share my views at on Monday, so I'll not torture you with that again. Interesting to hear what you all have to say. It's my observation over the last year or so that I've been on the Planning Commission that there's sort of two categories of activity and maybe individual member orientation. Some are very impressively able to dig into the architectural details, the stormwater flow, the real particulars of site plan work. And others are more step back, you know, generally speaking, does this look like a decent use, and can we go ahead and proceed with it without too much further deliberation? I think, mind large, a good balance is struck by those two approaches. And I think the Planning Commission, certainly in the last several years, has been very helpful to the council in sweating some of the details that council members just don't have time to sweat. And at the same time, working in tandem with the council's objectives to modernize the city when it comes to various developments that are brought forward. That's, you know, my goal in all this is to try to preserve as much of that as possible. And in that respect, I think staff has done the best that they can with a bad situation. And this is just going to be difficult because it's going to have to go a lot faster. And faster is, you know, not always better. The focus that I would, I guess, have tonight would be on something I didn't mention Monday night, which is, as I thought about the discussion that I heard, what you're talking about, the early review process, was really the function of the Economic Development Committee of City Council during most of the time that I was on. That group, which is just a creature of the, you know, whole body, it's not, you know, in law anywhere that says you've got to have an EDC. But we, as Mr. Stevens knows, because he used to attend pretty much all those meetings, we often would hear from an applicant before the application was filed, you know, "If the EDC gets together once a month, you know, could we come and show you just some conceptual drawings of this building that we're thinking about maybe doing?" And there were several instances, most notably Founders Road to Madera, where there was so much else going on, council, full council, didn't really have time to dig into, and where the EDC, working with staff and with representation from the Planning Commission, anybody else who wanted to come, these were open meetings, would sort of hammer out the application to the point that when it was put in, it was pretty mature. It was pretty much consistent with what the city had been doing in recent years on development. So, if you guys can come up with a process that in some way mimics that, replicates that, then maybe the impact of the new process will be less, less negative. I am concerned about, and it puts more responsibility, I think, on planning commissioners and everybody really who occupies any position of authority, to really even do more than we do already to reach out to the community when there is an application in the hopper. And, you know, let people know, "This is moving, you know, you need to come to this meeting." Every meeting is important when the clock is ticking as fast as it's going to tick on this process. And that's something that the public is not really used to. And as I don't need to tell anybody up here, T-Zones is just one example of how a process that went on for months and months, and more than a year probably, was still criticized as hasty and not seeking enough public input. And you're going to get that criticism doubled down with this new process, I fear. And so, we should try to do as much as we can upfront to prevent that, or guard against it, or at least give the public a sense that, you know, we're listening to what they have to say. The other night after the meeting, somebody said, so, or before the meeting it was actually, but he knew it was on the agenda, somebody raised the point of where you stand on this change in policy. And I said, "Well, I think we're going to take one for the team on this one because, you know, it basically is being put in place to expedite housing particularly, but just to expedite development generally." And that's not the first thing that comes to mind when I think of the city of Falls Church. Most of the things that we've done have been, not to say that people are opposed to development, but they've been challenging, because people don't move in Falls Church with the notion that, "Wow, this is a lousy place, it needs to be changed a whole lot." But, you know, in fact, we've made a whole lot of change, hopefully for the better. And I would hope that we can continue with some sort of process that will enable that change to move forward and not have to go the route of the discontented citizenry that you do see in some of the jurisdictions where, if the process does not yield an outcome that they like, they go to court. Or they ultimately go to the polls at election time. Not that there's anything wrong with elections being about specific issues or people choosing one course over another, but that's generally not been the formula that we have succeeded in operating under for the last several years. We've had, we've taken the time to develop enough community consensus that we can say we reasonably listened to you, and now we're moving forward. So, to wrap it up, I guess, thanks for staff's efforts to try to keep us included in the process. And if there's anything that can be learned from the EDC experience, that would encourage me to hope that on the front end, informal or semi-structured conversations with staff and certain key members of council and Planning Commission could still be part of the process that would help us expedite the matter when it does get appointed, when it does get sent to you all as a formal application.
I try to take a mental note of everything you captured. I want to go in reverse order to make my life easier. With respect to folks who appreciate the time involved in the review process and opportunity to weigh in, influence these projects, I fully agree with that assessment. And I also fully acknowledge that we could go in the complete opposite direction and give every project five months to review or a year. And there are still going to be folks that show up and target the process because they don't like the outcome. So, there is a certain segment of the population in every jurisdiction that we're never going to influence, and there will never be a good enough project for them. Because, like you said, they moved in here because they like status quo. Development represents change, they didn't sign up... they didn't sign up for that. And they have their own reasons for that, and that's fine. So we're mindful that there's always going to be some complaints, no matter what we do. What I think this presents us with an opportunity, with some restrictions, is that we can always encourage folks to reach out. You, you don't have to wait for us to tell you or require you to do outreach, to notify neighborhoods when you're planning to file something. Smart applicants can do that on their own. There's nothing prohibiting them from doing that. And in many cases, it's in their interest to start that dialogue early and kind of minimize the wrath of folks being surprised by an application being so close to approval. We're going to do our part to encourage that to happen, to meet with us initially, so we can kind of guide them. I think where the real opportunity exists is when we are in this new expedited review, if you will, information that will go out once we receive the application to you all and to others, will at least reference which resources, policies, and standards should be looked at in the context of this application. So some notes, some homework assignments, if you will, for those that maybe are not familiar with that part of the city or that particular project, will be provided in the handout, so you can kind of do some of your own assessment of, this is the area plan, or this is the comp plan I should be looking at to verify if it's appropriate or not, or these are the landscape standards that I should be evaluating. So kind of getting in our head in terms of what we usually utilize in review, allowing others to have the same tools at their disposal, given that we are going to be looking at a much shorter review time. So that's something we're working through, and how to give people the tools they need to make fairly a quick assessment of what's in front of them, and then continue to evolve. Like I said, by next summer, we may have more information that we have to react to. So I, I fully expect there'll be future updates to this.
Well said. Like I say, I think we're in good hands staff-wise to handle the turbulent new waters. I would ask everybody to keep a close eye on what's happening in Richmond this time. And as we discussed with the council the other night, you know, if there are other jurisdictions that are doing things or identifying concerns, to, you know, team up with them and just see if there's anything that can be done, particularly in terms of the days that you have to do the work. I mean, you know, 90 days sounds like a pretty tight schedule for most developments that I can remember that we've done here over the last 15 years. You know, 180 maybe sounds like a little too many, but if there's any flexibility that the legislature shows, you know, let's encourage our representatives to speak up for that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any final comments from anyone? Matt, I guess that finishes up on that. What's the next step on this then, Matt, as far as what we would see?
So we're going to be taking a lot of his feedback, as well as what we heard from the council. And right now, the first reading is scheduled for October 27. This is largely due to, A, our ability to make any adjustments we feel are necessary, fine tune some of the language itself, but also because in the month of October, there's going to be a number of work sessions, but not too many regular meetings. So really, October 27 is the next one that's available. And if that meeting goes well, we would be returning here in late November for this public hearing and making sure we get a vote that evening, and that will set us up for early December. So.
And the state code has to become effective on the first?
Uh, look to others. Is there, is there an effective date for this one?
It's already as of July.
You mean our, our changes?
I thought it was already effective as of July, the state code.
Yeah, the state has been in effect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Our changes would be immediate, though, as of December 8.
Yeah, we're playing catch-up, basically, right? We have no choice, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're just putting it in place. Luckily, we haven't had any applications, but it was effective July 1.
Yes. Okay. Shall we move on? The next item on our agenda is the cottage housing letter. And you will notice, there is no cottage housing letter. In talking this over with Andrea, the thought was, since there are going to be two commissioners out this evening, that it might be best to delay that till our next meeting, when hopefully, everybody will be there, and then we can go through discussion of that letter and decide what it is that we want. I mean, we're kind of in a gray area, I think, procedurally. Obviously, you know, action will have to, to come from, from council. But there was some thought that maybe some urging from the planning commission might, might be perceived as helpful. But anyway, we can go through all of that, I think, when, when we have our next meeting.
On that topic, and I don't know if we're jumping ahead to schedules, but.
You can just jump right into your director's report, if you like.
Did you have something else?
No, that's all I had on cottage housing.
So one thing, maybe if we can bring up the second page that deals with the schedule, because that actually relates to the letter you just noted. Given the active items that we're working on, several zoning ordinance amendments and rezonings, given the schedule for the council and the advertisements that we also have to abide by, as it relates to the agenda for the planning commission, we are essentially forced to concentrate a lot of those items from November and not have any in October. And that's simply because those meetings cannot happen until all those items had a initiating resolution, which we are actively working to do in late October. Again, the absence of regular meetings in October for the council is kind of driving the schedule. So as it relates to the cottage housing letter, you essentially have a few more weeks to do that, because that probably would not come back for a vote until your November 5 meeting. But that's actually still timely, because on November 17, I do understand things like that, and other work plan items might be of interest for the council as they start having other conversations. So I think November 5 should still work for a vote in that letter. And again, those agendas may change, so. But looking at November, we do have two dates, both which have a pretty full agenda. You can see here some of the items, Tinner Hill rezonings, a tree canopy update to the code, a zoning cleanup work session, which has a number of fairly technical corrections, nothing really substantive. And then later in the month, we are coming back for the public hearing for the site plan code changes, which is discussed. CIP quarterly update will be available by that point. And we are also going to have a public hearing for the Tinner Hill rezoning. And I believe in early December, if we scroll down far enough, we do have one meeting, or maybe it's mid-December, where I thought I saw one or two agenda topics. There we go. Those will be the public hearings for some of the items that we're beginning to work on in October. So that's kind of closing out the calendar year 2025.
All right.
Any questions on the calendar before I jump to the other item?
Just one. And this is something I noticed back in my previous life, was that planning commission usually was here on like Christmas Eve doing work after everybody else had gone home. And I, it's interesting how that, that seems to be rolling out here this time, too. I mean, I'm just mindful of staff and opportunities for a breather and so forth. I, you know, you guys are in charge of the agenda, not I am. But I wouldn't go any later than December 17, I think, because that's getting pretty close to people being away, if, if possible.
I don't think you're going to hear any pushback from us.
I just always was impressed that the planning commission was, you know, council would quit on the 10th at the latest, and planning commission was still going 15, 17, 18, you know. So, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we can go back and take a look. I think a lot of it has to do with the advertising dates, and they have to happen by a certain time. So if, if the math works out, we're certainly willing to entertain that. But just let us go back and check that. So with the schedule aside, in your packet, you'll see, there's really one major item in the director's report. This is courtesy of Kerry, our principal planner, on transportation related items. And it covers the Wilson Boulevard Safety Improvement Study. This kind of segment between Arlington Boulevard Service Road and John Marshall Drive and North McKinley Road. And it has a number of recommendations, including short, medium, and long-term improvements, a lot of new crosswalks, sidewalks, road diet, separated bike lanes, and a number of other items that really are needed in that area of Wilson Boulevard. So a lot of helpful information, and the study is attached, so for your consideration, and kind of a courtesy briefing there. But that's really the main item that we had in the director's report.
Thank you. I see I neglected the commissioner reports. Let me go back to there real quick. Does anybody have any, anything they want to share under that heading?
Just one. I got a note today that Tate, the new bakery, is opening up in the middle of October in Founders to Madera. So talk about a process that has gone on and on for a long time. Everybody go and grab a muffin.
Very good. I attended a very interesting tour of the Virginia Tech Grad Center, the brand-new building that's built in Alexandria. If you have a chance to see the inside of that building, I strongly encourage you do it. It is, the best way I can describe it is a work of art, with the materials, the design, the feel of the place. And it's all graduate students that are going to be at that campus.
Wasn't there a time we were going to get that building?
Was it?
Wasn't that, wasn't that at the side of the, wasn't there a period of time we were going to have that?
Oh, over here at the tech, oh gosh.
Yeah, the building that we used to own.
That would have been.
It's in the county, but the building that we used to own.
Yeah. I asked them, you know, what was planned for over here, and they kind of just shrugged their shoulders. So again.
They held your breath on that.
Yeah. So, but no, this, this building is phenomenal.
Alexandria got a nice building.
Yeah.
If you're happy for them.
Indeed. So. Okay, no other reports?
Andy Young running the race this weekend. I meant to give him a shout out. I saw Andy running right by my house, you know, the 5K, run for the schools, goes right by my street. I got up, I wasn't running, but I did get up early to watch it. And he ran right by, I gave him a shout out. So he gets kudos for getting up early and running. So.
Very good.
Is there any other city staff there, Jack? Have I had it for early morning jog? No?
Not a runner.
No?
I, I play soccer on Saturday mornings, but that's about it.
All right.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence? None?
Nope, no, Mr. Chair.
And I think unless there are any final comments, I believe we are done for the evening.
When's our next meeting?
Not till.
November?
November.
So we're not meeting?
Yeah.
We're not meeting in October at all?
Yes.
Excuse me or not?